Well, good morning. The time being nine AM. I declare open the special meeting for the Gladstone Regional Council for the 28th of June 2002. A call for apologies. We have no apologies. All councillors are present. However, we have councillor Muscat and councillor Churchill are online. So, thank you councillors for attending. The next item on the agenda is the prior notifications of conflicts of interest. Tanya, do we have any prior notifications? Councillors, are you aware of any that you haven't previously erased? No, and of course, if any come up throughout the meeting, please make sure you mention them at the time. And we feel we move into the officers' report. I'll just do a quick mayor's statement on current issues. Obviously, we had the Prime Minister and Cabinet visit Gladstone just recently, and I know that, but that's okay. It's Matt's agenda, so we're going to keep going. We had the Prime Minister and Cabinet in Gladstone just recently, and it was fantastic to have them here. And we also have some comments in the media today about the inland rail project. And it was great to be at the National General Assembly with councillor Goodluck and councillor Cameron and, of course, councillor O'Grady and officers, where lots of issues were discussed about issues affecting local government right across the country. And one of the issues, of course, was the inland rail project. And can I say how important this project is for central Queensland? And what we have is a community in Brisbane that doesn't necessarily want the project to go through to Brisbane. So, what we need to see is those communities have their say so that the project comes through to Gladstone, because it's never been more important for residents from Toowoomba to Brisbane to have their say so that it not necessarily goes to Brisbane, it comes through to Gladstone. Anyway, we'll leave it at that. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the officers' reports. And the first officers' report is G1.1, Gladstone Regional Council Transport Strategy, and I hand over to the general manager of Strategic Asset Performance, Mark Francis. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, councillors. The purpose of this report is to seek your endorsement for our Gladstone Regional Council Transport Strategy 2022. This is an operational plan item that's been outworked by Philip Baker, who's our engineer specialising in transport. This was an initiative to create a transport strategy to make sure that we had strategic network development and consistent and effective asset lifecycle management of our transport assets. It ranges from how we deal with our oversized overmass freight to active transport. Through the significant consultation process, both internally with stakeholders, with yourselves as councillors, and with industry representatives, we're presenting a thorough piece of work which I'm proud to provide to you, which will give that strategic alignment for future planning activities and initiatives across the transport infrastructure network. Phil's with us today to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Questions to general manager or Phil, please. Councillor Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, the obvious one to me is, I think it's mentioned on page 13, it just says enable better disability access to the transport network. And it's very limited mention of that throughout the whole document, and there's no reference to any strategy, because I don't think we've quite got one at the moment. We're working to that means, but we haven't got a disability action strategy with council, which, to my mind, we're lagging behind a lot of other councillors in not having that strategy. And it's very important to put it in a transport plan, because we have so many people with disability and aged and can't get on footpaths and whatever. So, I think it's very important that we have it in there. I didn't recognise that last time. We're at the end of it now, ready to endorse this. But, yeah, I'm still got concerns about that. That we don't reference this strategy, because we haven't got a strategy.
Yes, this is the overarching strategy. It will provide the guiding principles for us as we enter into the lower level initiative planning. And certainly, Phil can talk a little bit more. As we start thinking about building infrastructure on the back of this or upgrading infrastructure, then similar to safety, the disability access is dealt with in design. So, safety in design, disability access in design.
It is. Project management, yes. We've got it in project management, which is good.
Yeah.
But we still haven't got an overall plan, that's all.
Do you want to talk more, Phil?
So, I think, yeah, part of this will be covered in. We haven't spelt it out specifically similar to some of the environmental stuff. We haven't spelt out that disability inclusion is really just a general part of, we haven't been great in the past in this space, but these days that it's legislated fairly heavily. And it's just general practice now that environment and disability access is considered as part of everything we do. So, yes, like, take your note that we may have spelt it out a bit better in the strategy, and that's something we've let down. But it is, it's part of one of those things that we may have not thought of thoroughly, because it's general business for us.
I'm pleased to hear you say that, but just referencing to the public, they don't know that. And I get many questions from the disability sector all the time, and what's happening, and what are we doing, and what is our council doing. So, I think we should, you know, put it in our documents a bit more and inform the public what we're doing. It's good that we're doing that, yes, but we have to inform the public. Thank you.
I have spoken with the CEO about a suggestion you made about a disability action plan for or disability strategy. So, that would sit with Phil and the asset planning team to help outwork as well.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Further questions, councillors? Councillor Goodluck, and then councillor O'Grady.
I'm happy to move. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Have a move. Can I have a second before I go to councillor O'Grady? Second to councillor Trevor, and now councillor O'Grady has a question.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to back up what councillor Hanson said, because when I was reading this yesterday with the economic development in the section here, it says support active tourism and promote regional growth and whatever else. I think, I don't know whether you can change it all. Like, I'm glad you're supporting the disability, but there it's, you know, for all abilities, not just for, you know, just for, well, it's for everybody. So, but I don't know. I'd like to see it in the economic development section for all abilities. Oh, sorry. Page 13. So, under the economic development section of it, but if you're saying that council's going to, you know, because councillor Hanson and I have been talking about the disability action plan, so whether we can even address that in the disability action plan to refer to our other documents, maybe, or something like that, instead of changing this.
Yeah, and the intention of the strategic planning framework, which Carly and the strategy and transformation team are working on, is that there is, the guiding principles that sit here will cross a number of different pieces of work, and there will be a link between this piece of work and future pieces of work as well. So, if it is, if you'd like us to add something specific to that, we can, we can take that away and we can defer this and bring it back with that. Or we can, I won't say trust in the process, but we will address, if there's a piece of work about disability action planning or disability strategy for council, then that would reference back to this strategic document.
Well, I'd be happy if it was documented in the disability action plan when we do get to that or the strategy, whatever you want to call it. So, just to make sure that's included with all the documents that we put on the, you know, sometimes just sit on the shelf. So, we just need to, I think.
So, where it says enable better disability access to the transport network, did you want to add through a disability action plan? Sorry, Carly.
Sorry, can I just confirm with councillors that the disability access and inclusion plan has been according to the 2324, where the plan is to save the area and so we work with the strategy and strategy and that. But it has been a commitment that is in the 2324, which is to repeat that.
Okay.
I am interested in what you just said, Mr. Mayor. Can you repeat that?
Yep, sorry. I'm coming back to you. I've got councillor Churchill wants us a question too. So, it says on page 13, enable better disability access to the transport network. And we could, did you want to add in through the disability access, what did you refer to the strategy? Sorry? Access and inclusion plan. Through the review of the disability access and inclusion plan, maybe? Because we already have one, we're reviewing it? Or we don't have one at all?
No.
What was?
We don't have one.
We have, we have it, we have the part of the strategy listed in our project management, as was mentioned, and that's good. But we haven't got a complete strategy, that's all.
Okay, we've got a plan and a strategy. Righto. We're getting there. And we need one, because just got a look at our main street. It's very hard for people with disabilities to get around, and that's why we've made more car parking available in the back of the council chambers, which is good. We might just hold that for a second, councillor O'Grady. We'll come back to that. I have councillor Churchill online with some comment or question.
Yes, thanks, Mayor.
Sorry, councillor Churchill. Can you turn your mic up, please?
Are you hearing me now?
Very faintly. We'll see what we can do here. Try again.
I've got mine on麦斯brief. I totally support councillor Goodluck's motion. Just a quick comment and how it fits in here when we talk about promoting the expansion of our transport network, one of the key points. If we're going to promote expansion of our transport network, I'd like to think also, and maybe that's a comment from Mark, there's a lot of good work gone into here, but we need to learn from the past. We need to make sure that we don't take on any more roads that are delegated or devolved from other tiers of government, as we have seen in the past. And if we're going to do that, then we need to do a full cost estimate or assessment before we have a road delegated to us in local government.
Yep. Agree more. Love it when the main roads hand over roads to council. It's fantastic. I won't take any back. I've got a couple they can have.
I'm happy not to change anything in the document as yet, but ask that this, the development of this strategy be brought back to council at a discussion group meeting as soon as we can, just to see where things are going with it, if that's okay.
Is that the disability access strategy?
Yes, yes, councillor Goodluck.
Okay, so I get the point you're making, that we're adopting the regional transport strategy today. And then if it's not including enough for what you would like in terms of disability access, now is the time to add that? Or if you're happy with enable better disability access to the transport network, if that covers it, then we can leave it. If you want to amend it, now's the time. Councillor Goodluck.
Mr. Mayor, I fully support the valid point councillor Hanson and councillor O'Grady's made. But I do think this is the overarching framework, the transport strategy. It's around, you know, one network planning, taking into consideration councillor Churchill's points as well. You know, the working with transport and main roads, federal governments trying to bring all the pieces together. It certainly does mention disability access, and that will be a separate body of work that ties into this strategy. So, I'm comfortable that this is the overarching framework that will guide all of that, those bodies of work together. And certainly, we can look at those other documents and other strategies as they come on board and tie them into this one.
Okay, thank you. Mark, this obviously is only draft, so if it was, if there was a mine amendment, that wouldn't affect it at all?
We're still able to make an amendment.
So, what about, I know it just seems, I don't know, it just seems tokenistic. But I think if we move enable better disability access to the, to the transport network to point two under community, so enable a connected transport network that facilitates everyday use, and then instead of talking about boat ownership and other things, we put enable better disability access as point two in our transport plan, and it sends a clear message to members of our community that have a disability, that they're not underneath people who need to be able to get their boat in the water, which is very important in our community, of course, because we have a high boat ownership and we all want to get to the reef. But let's maybe move that point higher up into that dot point, and I think that might solve the problems that councillors are looking for. Councillor O'Grady?
Yeah, my thought was, that sounds great, Mr. Mayor, but my thought too was where it just, where it says support active tourism for all abilities, that's all I thought we could put there in the economic development section, if you were going to change it. Just so then it gives our visitors a message to say that we're supporting all abilities. No, so, under economic development, so support active tourism for all abilities.
Page 13. Oh, sorry. 13 on our.
Sorry, I've marked on.
Well, it's 13 on my page too, but that's because we've got an agenda page and a few other pages in there.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, in page nine, yes, it is, sorry.
Right, 3.1, our roles, goals, challenges and opportunities. Is there any further questions? Councillor Goodluck and Trevor, would you be happy if we moved the enable better disability access to the transport network to point two under community and add the words for all abilities in the economic development section under support active tourism?
I'm happy with those amendments, yeah.
Councillor Trevor? Any, councillor Hanson?
Yeah, just to further, nothing to do with that point, part of the document. How can we, I know it's not, not part of this document, but how can we improve advocacy? Because we've been sort of, over the last 17 years, still going on council, not got too far with improving the standards of our roads around here, our accesses or our entry statements to Gladstone. Just look at the, I'm always banging on about this, but look at the southern entry to Gladstone, it's very poor at the moment. Well, it's very poor. We have, we don't get fly-offs like other cities. We're not as privileged as they are. So, I, I just want to know how we can, I know we've got forums that our councillors sit on, but how can we improve? I think we need to get some strategies behind that to improve our advocacy going forward. Just to look at it a bit.
Perhaps councillor Hanson, you should move to southeast Queensland.
Plenty of flu down there.
How would you like me to answer?
We're not going to change the document on it, but it's just a point that we need to get some more action for the plan. We need to create more action. So, I don't know if that's a strategy we can put into our strategic planning moving forward. Happy to let the GM in charge of the strategy have a look at it and come back to us and say yes or no.
Yeah, and obviously where it says promote joint planning with other transport managers to provide a one-network approach, it would be ideal if they, other levels of government, i.e. the state government, took responsibility for roads that are roads that go, that are main roads, clearly main roads, and not a cost to the rate payer.
I had that point written down, Mr. Mayor. I thought I'd let you do that one.
Well, we've reminded them plenty of times. You drive along the Fingerboard Road on a main road, and you turn right to Bundaberg, and you are on a main road funded by the Queensland government, yet you turn left to Agnes Water, and it's left to the rate payers of the Gladstone region to fund the only access into it. Now, if that is not a main road, well, then I don't know what is. That's absolutely ridiculous that they don't own that road, and they should take responsibility for it. And I've asked them too many times, and I might just have to keep going. We won't give up.
Mind you, I'm not Gladstone-centric in saying this. I've got to mention the Tenham entry too as well. It's, it leaves a lot to be desired as well from coming north on the highway.
Well, I acknowledge that both roads into Tenham Sands are main roads, which is very good of them to do that. They just don't acknowledge the main road into Agnes, which is very disappointing, because we know how important Agnes is, northernmost surf beach in the country. So, it would be nice if the state government could take ownership of that. Mr. Bailey, if you're watching, it's all yours. Have it and fund it. So, I think the one-network approach is good. It's just who owns what is always a tricky issue when you have people in Rockhampton particularly advising us that they won't accept an extension to the main roads network. Anyway, we'll leave that there. That's for another day. Councillor Goodluck and councillor Trevor have moved the officer's recommendation as amended. We have those two amendments. Would you like me to read them back again? Under, yeah, under community, we're moving enable better disability access to the transport network, but point two and under economic development, support active tourism, we're adding the words for all abilities. No further questions or comments, councillors? No, thank you. I'll put the motion all in favour. Motion's carried. Thank you, councillors, and thank you, officer. Thank you, Phil and Mark. The next item on the agenda is G1.2, which is Surf Life Saving Sole Supply, and I hand over to the general manager of finance, governance and risk, acting, Kristy Wockner. I was thinking, hang on, he's sitting here. Over to you, Kristy. You've been here many, many times. Now you're acting. It's good to see.
Yeah, thanks. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and councillors. So, this first report is seeking resolution from council to make use of provision, section 235 of local government regulation, allowing exceptions for the requirement for quotes and tenders. And this provision's being sought in relation to entering a three-year contract with Surf Life Saving Queensland for lifeguard services at Tenham Sands Beach and Agnes Water Beaches. The current service levels are being retained in the new three-year contract. There is a small increase in price in line with the Surf Life Saving Queensland Enterprise Agreement, which leaves funds available in our budget for next year for beach accessibility option, which is currently being investigated.
Sorry, Kristy, I didn't realise. It's not a conflict of interest, but I just mentioned for the benefit of those watching online and the gallery, I am vice patron of Surf Life Saving Queensland, and being a patron of an organisation doesn't constitute a conflict. So... Questions, councillors? Councillor O'Grady?
Yeah, I'll start off with, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thanks, Kristy. Now, I just noticed there's no, there's nothing in here to say what the growth is for the Agnes main beach. So, I took it upon myself to do a little bit of homework and to find out what was going on. So, in the last two years, we've actually approved three, three different developments down there, which would, which out of those developments would house another 200 people in that community. Also, looking at the visitor information centre down there, winter is their busiest month, busiest months. So, I'd like to propose on this that we actually service Agnes all year round. If we read in the background, it does say that the Surf Life Saving Club provides year-round patrol service. So, it does, but it is only weekends for Agnes Water. So, I'd like to amend the recommendation to put an Agnes Water main beach have lifesavers all year round. Also, I could go on, the school has, their, their rate for school has gone up for 40%. Sorry, I'll just get my information. So, there's been a dramatic increase in visitor report by the major, in the major towns, an average of 50% increase from May to August, from 2019 to 2021, investment, the investments in the properties as well. So, we've, you know, there's a dive centre, camping, the camping ecotourism place, whatever, and 200 room, 200 buildings, which is staged for a village as well. Also, Airbnb is, there's 50 more since May 2000, since 2019 to now, there's 50 more registration and Airbnb new listings as well.
Oh, don't get me started on Airbnb. Let's not refer to them.
Yes, I know, exactly.
They've got a whole other world of problems for us.
Exactly right. So, but what I'm, what I'm saying, there are, let's create So, but what I'm saying, there are, it's creating more people to come to the area. So with this in mind, I'd like to change the recommendation to have the Surf Life Saving all year round. I've done some mathematical equations, so it works out currently thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and ten per month for the months that we're open, over the eight months. So that means for four months that we're not, the beach isn't open, it's one, this is just during the week, so I haven't counted the weekends, I haven't taken the weekends, haven't per day, but it works out about a hundred and fifty thousand extra, so, and with the twenty-three thousand taken off, twenty-three thousand taken off, it works out we'll need about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, just over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's on the high side because there's the two days for the weekends that we already pay them for. So, yeah, because there's just so many more people going to there, because it's just such a beautiful place to go to, so that's, I'd like to change that, please.
Okay, before I...
If you, if you, if you need to change it, you'd like to bring it back, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see a figure there. At the moment, it's people looking at the agreement at Tenham Sands and looking at the agreement at Agnes Water and seeing discrepancy, and I know what it's for because we maintain Agnes Water just with paid people, whereas we've got volunteers assisting at Agnes Water, which is great, at Tenham Sands, sorry, which is great. So that's the discrepancy there, and I think it's a big discrepancy anyway now. I think it's a huge discrepancy, so I'd like to see us to delve in a little bit more so we can actually see the way the costing works.
Just that there's no report from Surf Life Saving either, so that's, you know, I couldn't get a report yesterday as well to see what the increase of the weekend visitation was as well during winter.
So for those watching online, the current suggestion is seventy-nine thousand plus change for Tenham and three hundred and one thousand for Agnes, but it's not just to do with volunteers, we do actually have Surf Lifesavers at Agnes Main Beach longer than Tenham, because we did that a few years ago, and what you're suggesting is should be twelve months a year. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think councillor Hanson is right, we probably need all the figures in front of us to be able to make that decision. Now, I know a lot of these, the reason we're having a special meeting is because some agenda items needed to be approved or refused before the 30th of June, is this one of them?
Yes, it is, Mr Mayor, this is, we need to execute the contract in preparation for 1st of July.
Is a twelve-month contract an option rather than 2022 to 2025, a twelve-month contract? No?
I think councillors, one of the options here is, I think, is you can consider the item as presented, and then we can go and approach Surf Life Saving Queensland around your additional requests and get the data around that and potentially seek a variation if that's what you're looking for in that space.
Yeah.
That probably still gives us the head of power to move ahead and enter into this agreement, but also enables us to bring that on back here.
I'm thinking Surf Life Saving Agnes wouldn't oppose if we were to increase their contract. I know, I have, I'm happy for taking your motion councillor Grady, if you want, I'm just not sure about seconders at the moment, but it's totally up to you, if you want to move that way, we can, and I will accept it, or if you're happy for us to do what acting CEO Mark Holmes has just said, that's another option as well. Maybe while you think about that, any other councillors have an opinion on this? councillor Branthwaite?
I actually agree with the acting CEO, I tend to think that if we move on with this, the way it stands at the moment, at least it gets the contract underway with a, possibly with a variation to consider future increases, especially with an increase with the actual agreement itself, it'll actually change that altogether. But at least this way it gets it underway for the 1st of July, but I can see where councillor Grady's coming from though, it's certainly a very popular beach, and I can see also from being a resident at Tenham Sands, you know, relying on volunteers all the time certainly, and they can certainly see how much money gets put into the likes of Agnes Water, there's obviously a bit of green envy coming from one side to another as well. So I really, while I really enjoy volunteering, I don't like volunteers taking for granted either, so, but this whole thing, I think, needs to come back to the table, so that's my thoughts.
councillor Goodluck?
I'm comfortable with the way it is now, I'm happy to look at the data, as councillor Grady's rightly pointed out, we don't sort of have that there, but noting that from the start of April through to the end of the, sorry, from the start of the September school holidays through to the end of April, it's seven days coverage as it stands at Agnes Water. Given the colder temperatures, and I haven't been down to Agnes in the last couple of weekends to see who's swimming, but I'm anticipating that there's probably not as many people swimming, and I could be wrong there, and we still have weekend coverage over those cooler months of the year. So that's, you know, considerable funding for that service in that area, and I think it's appropriate funding and an appropriate service level, which certainly covers the peak times, and I'm happy to stand corrected, but we also have, you know, a very challenging, you know, budgetary environment that we're in as well. So that's, happy to look at the data and the figures and the stats, if there's something that where we need to make changes, but as it is, I think that's an appropriate level of service.
councillor Grady?
I hear what you're saying, but with the grey nomads and the highest caravan, I was talking to the MCA when I was down in Canberra, and it's, the last two years has been the highest caravan sales for the whole of Australia. Also with, with the grey nomads, they don't come on the weekends, they only come during the week, and usually the weekends for local people and whatever else, so they usually do the moving things on the weekends, so, yeah, so the temperature of the water's been like, you know, twenty-four degrees, so the Victorians, they all swim in the winter, you go down there and there's people on the beach everywhere, so I am concerned that, you know, that, you know, we don't want to see a death or a drowning, and I know last year there was some near drownings in this particular town, and the locals had to pull them out of the water, and it, like the mayor said in our last conversation, it's the last surf beach on the northern, on the northern route to the tip of Australia, so I really think we should consider this.
But with respect, RVs don't only go to Agnes Water, they come to Tenham as well, and they come to Gladstone, not for a swim, I guess, but...
There's nothing wrong with dining point.
Is a good swim.
Thank you, absolutely is. councillor Cameron?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I think if you look at the officer's recommendation, item number one, we have no problem with that, that we are looking to go into sole supplier agreement, so we've got to do that today. Item two is the contentious one, item three, I don't think we've got an issue with that either. So could we deal with item two and somehow come up with a alternative in the wording to that so that we can get a, go ahead with this, with the sole supplier arrangement?
Contract with Surf Life, we can, we can add a four, which bring back variation options, but once the CEO enters into a three-year contract, can we...
Yeah, we generally have variations through various contracts as they arise and as circumstances to those might change, so this could well be one of those. So I can see that if you were to essentially have an item four, that would essentially, yeah, authorise the CEO to undertake investigations into the patrol of Agnes Water Beach on a twelve-month basis and bring that back, those options for council's consideration. I think that could outwork that, and you could then make sure you've got a contract in place from one July, and then you can consider that in a timely matter as well. Because I don't think it would take overly long to get that data from Surf Life Saving Queensland as to what that variation might be.
Even if we did have, sorry councillor Grady, I think I can help you there, and if we authorised CEO to enter into a three-year contract with Surf Life Saving, you could say, which includes variations, which includes possible variations to extension, something along those lines, and I don't think we should say possible extensions to Agnes Water, I think we'd say extension, because if we're looking at Agnes to extend the time, we should absolutely be looking at Tenham to consider extending the time there, because as has been said, we already cover Agnes considerably longer than Tenham. So if we're going to look at moving Agnes to twelve months, then we should look at what we're doing at Tenham Sands at the same time. So are you happy if we authorised the CEO to enter in a contract, like councillor Cameron said, one and three are fine, into a three-year contract with Surf Life Saving Queensland for provision of services which includes potential variations? councillor Trevor, you're the lawyer?
Thanks, Mayor. I don't see any problem with item two entering into a three-year contract because it's a minimum service today that we're asking to sign up to, or agree with Surf Life Saving Queensland, so whatever we do after the minimum, it may well be the case that Surf Life Saving Queensland don't have the ability to facilitate additional servicing of Agnes Water. So it might be good intent and in order to save a life or lives, but Surf Life Saving Queensland might come back to us and say, I'm sorry, we can only agree to the minimum which you've already sanctioned because we don't have that ability to service it on a full-time basis, so we need to be cognizant of the fact that there may be some issues, not with us and our ability to pay for more, but with them being able to provide an additional service. I'm happy with the recommendation today because that's the minimum we're going to provide. Where we go to from there is a matter for, for the chief executive officer and the officers to resolve, I think, and bring it back to us if they're able to provide an additional service for consideration.
I was just going to suggest that for the comfort of councillors, we could potentially add a four that requires a CEO to bring a report back exploring the provision of all-round services.
Thanks, I just wrote that, report back to council on providing additional services, point four, so thanks, Tania, you're on the same wavelength. councillor Grady, would you be happy with that?
Yes, I will be, that would be great. Getting back to councillor Trevor's point, so this will be for next year, so that would give Surf Life Saving some room to move as well, for, like, that wouldn't start till May next year, so that's why I thought, you know, if we start, or if we could start the ball rolling, and that would be perfect, I think. Tania, thank you.
councillor Trevor?
My other issue in the exploration of this possibility is to inquire as to why we can't have volunteers in Agnes Water, similar to Tenham Sands, providing a service to their community rather than expecting the rate payers of the Gladstone Regional Council to fund one hundred percent. Why, why, why is it, and the question begs of itself, why isn't it that we haven't got volunteers down there when we can provide volunteer services in Tenham Sands and Boyne? If we're having this big population explosion, then where are the people making themselves available to provide a service that doesn't cost us any money?
Yeah, I definitely agree with that, councillor. If you look at the time we service Tenham Sands Beach, I think the equal...
Yeah, sorry, you keep going, I just not...
Just distracted me a little bit, Mr Mayor, I thought you were having a go at me.
Not at all, I just read that and went, no, I'm not sure that's what I intended.
I always look to my left, no. If you look at the disparity now with services, and you have a group of people that are volunteering in Tenham Sands, I think there's a big disparity, and I think we should look at the whole situation. I agree with you councillor Trevor.
Sorry, I would say provide additional services, because it may not be all year round, because we may want to include additional services to Boyne Tenham, that may only be an extra couple of months, weekends, days, whatever, and refer to all year round, and I don't want to put a date on it for the CEO, I'd rather have no date. That leaves it up to the CEO, otherwise, yeah, that the CEO provides a further report to council exploring provision of additional services. I think that covers most of everyone's, if not all of everyone's concerns. councillor Grady, you're the one who raised, so it's mostly yours.
Yes, I'll be happy with that, thank you.
councillor Muscat and councillor Churchill online, are you happy with that amendment? Or any further questions?
Hi, thanks. Do you mind, Glen, if I just say a couple of things before you?
You go right ahead, Natali.
Thank you. I, I just, we spent many weeks going around next year's budget, and also looking at the levels of service for a lot of different services the council provides. I do remember, it wasn't only, it was only probably not even two years ago that we'd gone through a similar exercise where the charges for this service increased a significant amount. I'm very happy with the officer's recommendation as it was. I think we haven't, this is a discussion about levels of service and also about the ability of council at this time to provide more. I know there's more people, but the service that we have at the moment is actually very, very good, in my opinion, so I'm happy to go again and have a look at, you know, what are the numbers of people visiting, and, but, you know, we have been going through different situations in the world, we had Covid, this, you know, things go up and down as well. Look, I'm happy to have some other report come in, but I'm very happy with the way things are at the moment, and I do echo the comments from councillor Trevor about the ability of the supplier to provide this, we can't just go and say, oh, we want more, we need to obviously have a conversation with them because we don't know, they might be very well able to do it, but not necessarily, and it might also take some time, and we have also almost finished our budget, so that's, I don't think we need to change that at the moment. And the other thing is definitely the equity in services around the region, we need to really see that, we can't just see Agnes without looking at the other places where people enjoy their beaches.
Thank you councillor Muscat, councillor Churchill?
Just very briefly, concur with councillor Trevor's comments about getting more volunteers involved. Happy to support the recommendation, and I look forward to reviewing the report that will come out at point four, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? So I have, I need to move for either the motion or the amended motion, I don't have that yet actually, sorry. So councillor Grady, happy to move the amended motion? Thank you, moved as amended with point four, I do have a second for that? Thank you councillor Branthwaite. No further comments or questions, I put the motion all in favour. So those against? Two, three, I'm sorry, I have to go all again, sorry councillors, all in favour? I'll do the count, one, two, three, four, five, the motion is carried, thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is G 1.3, which is labour hire specialised suppliers, and I'll hand back to the general manager of finance, governance and risk acting, Kristy, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. So this paper's seeking resolution from council to make use of section 35 of the local government regulation, allowing exceptions for tenders and quotes. This provision's sought in relation to labour hire services from licensed labour hire providers in Queensland. So labour hire can be sourced from labour hire providers licensed under the Labour Hire Licensing Act of Queensland only, and the selection of providers for these services is based on the personnel they have available, their skills, qualifications, experience and availability. Therefore, it's not, it can't be subject to a competitive process. The engagement of labour hire is facilitated through our engagement of contractors procedure, which includes a mandatory consultation process in which the affected and potentially affected employees are consulted, as well as the relevant unions.
And our EBA, obviously?
Yes.
Thank you. And there's obviously going to be new federal legislation around labour hire as well that needs to be considered. Councillors, comments or questions? Obviously, it's only used very rarely and when necessary, and if someone's been on labour hire for a number of weeks or months, that position becomes a permanent position.
Yes, that's great.
Happy to move the motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Churchill, seconded councillor Hanson, any further... Thank you, councillor Churchill. Seconded councillor Hanson. Any further comments or questions? I put the motion all in favour. It's carried. Thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is G1.4, expenditure approval, supply and delivery of two-wheel loaders. Back to you, Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report seeking resolution from council in accordance with the Register of Financial Delegations to approve expenditure for the supply and delivery of two Caterpillar 938K wheel loaders. The replacement of these loaders is in accordance with the 2022-23 Fleet Replacement Programme. It's in accordance with the fleet standardisation practices and it's contained within the proposed 2022-23 capital budget.
Looks great, doesn't it? So everyone online can see that, can they? Can we scroll back to that?
I love those yellow machines. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's just fantastic. It's best when we own them ourselves. Councillor, good luck. You have a question or moving? Moving and seconding by councillor Grady. Any comments or questions? Shame we can't have four. All in favour? Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda, thank you, I know it's still going, is insurance services. Back to you, Christie.
Yep. Thanks. So this report seeking resolution from council in accordance with council's Register of Financial Delegations to approve expenditure of insurance services. So this is a rollover of our current insurance coverage. There is no change to coverage or the supplier and it's contained within our proposed 2022-23 budget.
Okay, pausing now, sorry. Now, just thinking, LGM is a subsidiary of the Local Government Association of Queensland, which are on the board of the directors. We've always used them, we always have, but I still think just because of the way crazy conflicts rule and work these days, I'm going to hand over the deputy mayor and allow this decision to be made without me in the room. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Did you have anything further? Christie, no. Councillors, any questions? Fairly simple. Do we have a mover? Move councillor Cameron, seconded councillor Branthwaite. Put the motion, all those in favour. That's carried. Can we invite the mayor back, please?
Yeah, I think I will. So, yeah, I'll declare, obviously, councils across Queensland all use LGM for insurance and have done for many years. But conflicts of interest these days are going a bit crazy. But I am a board of directors. I'm the policy executive member for the Local Government Association of Queensland for Central Queensland, representing Central Queensland councils. And as that, I'm also on the board of directors for LGAQ, which is the board that sort of manages this, or we don't manage, we then have another board that manages LGM. But they report back to and are solely and wholly responsible to LGAQ. So I guess it's, I don't receive, I don't, there's no benefit to me in supporting this or not supporting this. And in fact, the benefit comes back to councils because they pay a dividend back to councils. I'm not sure what the new rule of what kind of conflict it is, but I'll declare whichever one it is.
It's a prescribed conflict.
Conflict. So I'll declare a prescribed conflict and that's why I left the room. Yeah. And I should have picked it up earlier, but in 22 years, we've used LGM. And before I was on council, almost every council in Queensland uses them. It's just a, just the way we insure things. But just someone might say, oh, the mayor's on the board of LGAQ and therefore, for some bizarre reason, that's why he supported that motion. So better for me not to be in the room. But I don't even know whether he supported it or not. If he didn't, I think he'd still be talking because it would have been a long to find another insurer. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Gladstone Airport Corporation Board Recruitment.
Can I, can I just flag that I am an appointed board member from council on this board?
Thank you. And of course, as an appointed board member from council, there's no conflict. But thank you for identifying it for those online. Sorry, this is not, this is a sad notion, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this paper is seeking a point, sorry, recommendation from council to appoint the board of the Gladstone Airport Corporation, be extended to the 31st of October '22 for Dr Bradley Bowes. And also that council proceed with a recruitment of two new directors with the appointments to commence first November 2022 for an initial period of two years.
Yeah, okay. I thought I saw something after I delegated from the airport corporation that we was going to suggest that Dr Bowes be extended till January 1 next year. Is that right? Sorry, Tania?
Yeah.
It's option two.
There is a second, there is a second option in here. The officer's recommendation is in line with council's previous resolution. And it's also acknowledging the fact that we have appointed directors Australia to assist us with the recruitment of those board members. And we would expect quite a well-qualified director to be appointed for those services.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Councillor, good luck.
Mr. Mayor, on, you know, it's certainly uncertain times for airports across the nation. The last two years has been a difficult time for many, but the, you know, airport industry has been no exception. And on that basis, and also given, you know, the discussions that we had with the Chair of the Board in a recent presentation, I'm happy to move option two. I think it gives a little bit more certainty for that extended period of time. It also allows the new director to, you know, be inducted and get secure in the position before we would then go to recruit a new director to replace Dr Bradley Bowes, noting that he's got exceptional experience in the field. So I'm happy with option two.
Did you say you'd like to move that way?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Is there a second for that? Or maybe?
No, I won't.
Thank you, councillor Hanson. Maybe someone else? Councillor Trevor?
Seeing I didn't get my way many years ago, Mayor, to sell the Gladstone Airport Corporation
Please remind us about that again.
On the open market prior to Covid, at a fantastic market price at the time. I'm happy to support councillor Khan's motion.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Trevor. Never miss an opportunity.
Councillors, with respect to the recruitment that we're out with directors of Australia currently, we will essentially be getting two recommendations from them. So when we do bring back, I don't think it's actually going to be a new recruitment process. I don't know about item three that's in that. But essentially, you're going to be, it's already being outworked. What you will do is essentially you'll have two, a recommendation to appoint. And you'll have essentially one with an effective start date there of 1 September and then one starting on 1 July '23.
Yeah, point three would be redundant.
We'll have to incorporate some elements of point three into two.
Yeah.
Add up on the screen so when we're moving the second, I can be happy with that.
Essentially, they've already got a market of directors of Australia actually doing that engagement as we speak.
So we'd do the recruitment of both at the same time and then advise them when they start.
Essentially stagger the starting dates for those two new directors.
Which we were going to do anyways, just different staggering, different start dates. I'm happy with either that. Councillor, good luck.
I'm happy for that to be outworked in that, in that way, noting that, you know, the challenging time that it is, there's no sort of guarantee that there will be, you know, those outstanding candidates available. Let's hope for the best. But I'm happy for that to be outworked in that manner, Mark.
Thank you. Councillor Muscat or Churchill online, any comments? No?
All good. Thank you.
Can we just bring an amended motion up on the screen, please? If that's okay? Here we go. June 23. Okay.
Can I just clarify, before we say commence 1 September, but the term versus life, both? What's this both for an initial?
Both directors have that two years.
And they'll start at separate times. Okay, and then we can stagger that.
We know what the, sorry, I should have had microphone on. Do we know what the remaining board members' terms are? Is that going to conflict with any of them? We're not going to have another two retire at the same time again? Councillor Hanson, did you say you know that? No?
No, it's in the, in the document somewhere. Gives you the times of it they've been appointed to.
I'll have to have a look at a previous, the previous report.
Sorry, I missed that. I didn't see that. I know when.
We can outwork that load at that time.
I know you can, but if it says two years in the recommendation, then that's all it can be. But anyway, let's leave it at that. I'm sure that the board can always bring back.
Repointed the chairman chairperson
Yep.
From the 1st of July '22 for another four-year term.
Okay.
And we've, we've, yeah, so that's the only one.
Yeah, fantastic. All right. No, that makes sense. I just don't want to see it a case where all or two or three or board members are up for renewal at the same time. Councillor, good luck. And Trevor, are you happy with that amended motion? Thank you. Councillors, any further comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion now on the screen as amended. Moves seconded, all in favour. Motion's carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, G1.7, Financial Monthly Report for the period ending the 31st of May. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this report seeks council adoption of the monthly financial statements for the 2122 year-to-date for the period ending 31 May '22. And I'm going to hand over to Jess, our Systems Modeling and Metrics Specialist, to talk through the paper and answer any questions.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you. Good morning. All right. As Christie mentioned, we're looking at financials up until the end of May, which is interesting, given that we're just knocking on the door of the most wonderful time of year in the next few days.
Does the accounted?
So please keep in mind that we have had another month on since these reports have been prepared. So there's a few things I'll touch on as I'm going through, but we are getting ready to roll at the end of the year as well. Starting, this report is the first time that we have seen the forecast, the final forecast for the year. So this forecast was prepared between officers and my team throughout the months of April and May. We're now sitting at a 2.7 million deficit compared to the budgeting operating deficit of 0.9 million. So just for a little bit of context, our previous forecast deficit was 1.8 million. So we've had a swing of about a million dollars in there. When we did that last forecast, that was in September. So that was prior to some of the really big CPI movement that we've seen. And we've also had to deal with the impact of the increased depreciation, which has only been recognised in this new forecast, not in the previous one. So all things considered, not a bad place to land when you think about those factors. I've listed out some of the main movements in the forecast compared to the budget here. I'll just touch on a couple. If there's anything else in there you'd like more information on, just stop me. So we've got our increase on the income tax equivalents revenue from the water board. So as we know, that figure, that has now come in, came in at the start of June. And I've got that in here a little bit later, 8.6 million, which is significantly more than we had in our original budget for that amount. We also had the advance payment of the financial assistance grant at 75%, where we had only budgeted at 50. So that's a 2.9 million swing in our favour as well. We've had a reduction in contractor and consultancy expenditure across the business, some of which was in the recoverable workspace. And we've also seen a reduction in our materials and services costs as well. In terms of things going the other way, as I mentioned, we had some expenditure reductions in recoverable works that comes hand in hand with some income reductions as well. In terms of finance costs, our borrowing rates that we had budgeted were based on the quoted figures for our QTC loan restructure, which are different to the rates that we ended up seeing once we signed that off. So a small movement there. There's also a movement there regarding the loan between Gladstone Airport Corporation and Gladstone Regional Council and the way that we have handled their repayments financially. So that'll be put to bed at year end. Increases in costs, we've seen those across motor vehicle, fuel, property maintenance and equipment expenses, including external hire, which is not a surprise when we think of some of the trends that we're seeing at the moment. Rolling through our statement of income and expenditure, we've got our final water reading cycle. The revenue from that will be recognised within this year. So that will bring our net rates and utility charges up closer to the forecast. Interest revenue is at the moment at 76% of the forecast. There's a risk here that we're not going to achieve our forecast in interest. The conditions still remain pretty limited for recouping interest revenue. But we have resumed our investing activities now. We're getting rates out there that are better than QTC. So good to see. As I mentioned, income tax equivalents, at the time I prepared this report, we had our 8.6 million confirmed. And when I looked this morning, it has hit the bank. So it is in there now as at the start of June.
He has questions? Councillor Branthwaite?
Sorry, just going back to the sales revenue side of things, you sort of skipped over that one. There's a pretty, pretty big difference there between actual and budget.
Yep, my apologies. So the budget for the recoverable works income was set back, you know, prior to the start of the year.
Yeah.
And as the year has gone on, the opportunities for recoverable works from the likes of the state government and I believe through the RMPC programme as well have been reduced on what we were expecting. Didn't touch on it so much, sorry, because it does reflect in a reduction in expenditure as well. So the bottom line is not too heavily impacted.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all right.
Any further questions, councillors? Before we put the motion, can I just congratulate Jessica on her Academic Excellence Award, topping the state for the last three exams at the CPA Awards held recently. We're pretty wrapped to have you as part of our team. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I think we have more.
I'm still going, though.
I know, I know. I know, but that was just recently and well done, kicking goals. And in our finance team, which is perfect.
That's the spot.
Councillor Branthwaite, question?
I'll wait if you keep him going. I just got the question there further as well.
Save him up, I'm ready. If we look at our capital revenue, you can see here that we have adjusted our forecast for capital revenue down from 16 million to 11. This is a more realistic expectation of where we think we're going to end up. As we've discussed before, capital revenue is recognised upon the completion of milestones within our capital projects, which is an accounting standard that came into play in the last financial year. So there will still be further capital revenue recognised as we get towards the end of year, particularly at 30 June when those final recs are done and we see our accruals coming back into the year as well. So there's a nice big table there which shows the various projects that had budgets forecasts and where we've recognised income so far. Into expenditure, total recurring expenditure at the moment is at 86.92%, which is a little bit below the prorata percentage for the year. But we do typically see an upswing in June when we do our accruals at year end. We do major accruals throughout the year, but there's the culmination of all of those smaller bills and smaller accruals that come in and cause a surge in June. Employee benefits are at 92.22% and the average vacancy rate for the year-to-date is 9.9%. This is compared to the budget we had of 6% vacancy, which has gone away to smoothing out the impact of the EBA increases, which were 2.5% compared to a budget of 1.5%. When we look at contractors and consultants, there has been a drop in the forecast compared to the budget. And there are still a few areas where we are lagging in our spend in that. I've listed them out for you there. Had a look at sewerage contractors this morning, specifically that being the biggest one. And I think there are potentially some savings to be had there, but we'll know as we get closer to end of year and look at those accruals. Donations and sponsorship, so there is funding approved under the Community Investment Programme that will get those actuals up to the forecast. The press now is to make sure that those amounts are either distributed by 30 June or the agreements are signed and dated so that we can bring those back into the year. So my, the finance team are on to that and will be doing their best to get those in the appropriate year. A few things here where we are getting close already to our reforecast and may go over, which is the area of fuel and also motor vehicle expenses.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Jess, just at the motor vehicle expenses, it was quite a significant change there too with, what, you know, we've got actually a new fleet, is that right across the board though, or is it, are we still dealing with some, some problem vehicles out there that are costing a lot of money?
Yeah, we, we've still got quite a lot of, of older and ageing vehicles, we certainly haven't replaced everything, to my knowledge, there's a fair bit to go, and we've got some that are now.
Because that's, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at a hundred-and-forty-seven per cent above budget.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, it, it's in those areas of repairs, materials, tyres, that sort of thing.
All right, here's John. Probably the man in the know.
With respect to the size of the fleet, the new fleet, that's referring to the, like, commercial vehicles?
Yeah.
Our larger plants such as the Wood Lotus that we approved earlier in this meeting, are the larger bits of kit that are still costing us extra money to maintain.
I saw, like, this is the repairs of the old stuff?
Yes, and there's been, for about two years now, a very slow trickle of supply of those larger gear, particularly around caterpillar equipment and trucks that come from overseas, particularly from the USA.
So we should see in the next couple of years, we should see this, this aspect probably peel back a bit because of the fact we've got new gear?
Except for the price of fuel.
Except for the price of fuel, yeah, it's just like gold, isn't it? Yeah, I think, thanks for explaining that.
Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Back to you, Jess.
And the other one I had highlighted here was staff and councillor expenses are also behind prorata at the moment, it's to do with recruitment activity, so we've spent point-one million against a forecast of point-three, but recruitment activity is, is increasing in the, the tail end of this year, so they are certainly expecting to utilise that forecast.
Okay.
Over to the statement of financial position, so this is where we expect our balance sheet to end at thirty-June twenty-twenty-two. With regards to assets, so our cash balances are still high, we're expecting them to reduce as we meet our operating and our capital expenditure requirements by year-end, as well as paying down our final quarter payment of debt payments. Receivables and other assets, including the prepayments and the water charges that we get to bill, they will increase at year-end, which is common at this time of year, we usually see those come up in June. Liabilities, so our current balance includes five-point-two million dollar provision for the restoration of cell two A of Benaraby landfill, not expecting to see this utilised until the twenty-two, twenty-three year, so it will stay there in current liabilities. Borrowings, we're expecting to come down by two million when we make those repayments in June. And contract liabilities, so this is where I was referring to our capital income and also some of our operating income where we've received grant funding and we haven't earned it yet, so it sits here in liabilities until such time that we can move it over to revenue. If we look at our capital expenditure, actuals year-to-date is forty-two-point-six million, which includes two-point-three million of accruals, and our commitments that are our open purchase orders are seven-point-three, which takes us up to forty-nine-point-nine. The forecast has been redone to a more realistic position of fifty-two-point-five million, so if we take those actuals as well as the open purchase orders that we have in the system, we're at ninety-five per cent of that forecast as at the end of May. Jump over to outstanding rates, at the end of May, we had seven-point-eight million in outstanding rates and nine-point-nine million of rates paid in advance, which makes all of our graphs look pretty interesting when we're doing them behind the scenes, and you can also see on that outstanding rates graph that we're at four-point-two per cent of outstanding rates, which is lower than any of those other years that you can see plotted there, which is a really big effort from our recovery team.
And also because people now have been advised you don't have to pay, by that you can pay a little bit each week, or you can pay every month, you can pay every quarter, you can pay whatever instalment you want, and I think making that more well-known about three or four years ago has really helped get to that point.
Yeah, so we have one thousand, one hundred and eighteen assessments that are currently on payment plan. Quick look at our sustainability ratios, so our asset sustainability ratio, if we look at the new forecast figure there, eighty-seven-point-six-three per cent, which is very close to our target of ninety per cent, where we're going to end up there is dependent on the split of the capital works that we do between here and the end of the year, so renewal projects are what get us towards our asset sustainability, and as you can see there, our renewals have accounted for seventy-one-point-two-three per cent of our capex year-to-date, the rest being our new and upgrade projects, so we've had a big effort this year in renewal spending, which is what's getting us really close to that target. We look at interest coverage, that's a good result there, the target is zero to ten per cent and we're at zero-point-four-five, it's an improvement on the prior year as a result of the loan restructure, so our interest costs are down compared to where they were in prior years. Operating surplus ratio is reflecting positively at the moment, however, we are expecting it to dip down into negative in line with the forecast deficit. Working capital ratio, this is a good result, we're hoping for a target of greater than one is to one, and we're at two-point-five-eight is to one, it's based on our healthy current assets balance, which includes our cash and our receivables. And the net financial liabilities ratio is less favourable than this time last year due to the fact that we took up that larger landfill provision at thirty-June, realistically, those conditions were probably in existence at this time last year anyway, we just hadn't taken them up until end of financial year, still in a good position there at twenty-five-point-three-five per cent. Cash expenses cover, so this looks at our cash balance and for how many months we could cover our monthly cash expenses, and we are at seven-point-three months' worth of cash. Good result. And that's me, are there any more questions?
What are you actually aiming for with that last one?
Hoping for more than three.
Hoping for more than three months? Okay, yeah. Do you have the councils a benchmark around the traps, are we way above that?
You're going to fight, it depends essentially whether you're a growth council or whether you can get, there's some that sit on, there's some very significant cash balances.
Yeah.
It's where you're up in asset replacement, so I think we'll end up, some of our long-term forecast taxes below three.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
This is on the table, actually manage that, so as well, the opportunities around working capital facilities and the like, to ensure that if we, if we do need, that we can go, you know, those ten-three.
Reserves, yeah. Yeah, I have to say that the reports that come out of the department, you guys, is incredible, really is, it's, I think the management of the finances across this, this, this region are in very, very good hands, and the reports that we've got and the, and the good indications that we're actually heading in the right direction is a, is a real, is a real feather in your cap, you know, there, I think we've got a real good brains trust in their, in their finance, in their finance sector, and well done, thank you very much.
Absolutely, councillor Churchill.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mayor Matt, congratulations Jess, personally and professionally. My question relates to something we discussed at our monthly financial report end of April, was the financial assistance grants from the Australian Government, which was the advanced payment, and perhaps, Mayor Matt, you've come back from Amber, from the Australian Local Government Association, and you know, I keep, we all keep on about the financial assistance grant, so what's the current status as of today, albeit going into the next financial year, first of July?
Well, the, the federal government have increased them, but I can throw to Jess to answer what dollar figure went into our bank account.
If I could get the two answers, one would be what did the amount was that went into the bank account? And the other one is what's the current status, so that everybody could understand from the first of July, from your perspective, from the Australian Local Government Association?
Okay, from an Elga point of view, we've always lobbied for our one per cent, and we continue to lobby for one per cent of total taxation, to come back to local councils, we don't believe that just one per cent of Commonwealth taxation to local councils across the five-hundred-and-thirty-seven government, local governments in the country is too much to ask, we realise it's going to take a number of years to get there, and we will continue to lobby for that, regardless of who's in government, we will continue to lobby for that, and the current government have increased financial assistance grants, however, at the same time, the Queensland Government has Grants Commission review, potentially impacts the amount of funding that goes to Queensland councils, based on that, and that is not the Queensland Government's fault, I need to stretch the imagination, I'm not having a dig at Glenn, the Grants Commission is separate to government and their recommendations to change the methodology of how the federal funding is distributed across the state of Queensland, which if, if adopted, does affect a lot of councils in Queensland, some benefit more, some benefit less. My argument as the Vice President of Elga and as LGAQ Board Member has always been, and as Mayor, that you don't mess with the methodology until you increase the pie, I'm very happy for, very happy for our neighbours in Bananashire and Warribinda to receive more money because they absolutely need it, very disappointed for the likes of Rockhampton and Bundaberg and, and Twumbo and Frasercoast, which are going to receive considerably less, Gladstone's affected, but not as significant as the others if the Grants Commission, the Queensland Grants Commission recommendations, so on one hand you get an increase from the feds and on the other hand you might technically lose, what we need is a bigger increase of financial assistance grants from the federal government, which we will continue to fight for, and we need the Grants Commission in Queensland to potentially not mess with the methodology too much, whereby some councils are extremely disadvantaged, but at the same time, I have no problem with our friends in Warribinda and Bananashire receiving more money because they absolutely need it. The irony is, under the methodology, the North Burnett, one of our other neighbours, who are in financial, serious financial issues, are going to receive less under the, the Grants Commission review, which makes absolutely no sense, and no wonder the Mayor is pulling his hair out and the Deputy Mayor is doing the same, because to take funding from the North Burnett is absolutely ridiculous. Jess, maybe have a chat.
Yeah, but just, just focusing on our council area, we're going to be affected, but how much did we get in the advanced payment?
Yeah.
And, and when is, and when is the new methodology going to be implemented, from the first of July twenty-twenty-two?
Uh, as far, sorry, I'll throw to Jess, but as far as I'm sure I've been advised about the, the state's methodology, I'd been told that, that the state hadn't adopted it, but apparently they may have.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of confirmation of the state's methodology at this point, I haven't seen anything to confirm what our allocation, our total allocation for twenty-two, twenty-three is, I believe that the adjustment takes place from the twenty-two, twenty-three allocation onwards, and the amount that we have received in May of six-point-eight million forms a part of our twenty-two, twenty-three allocation, so we're, we're still at this point waiting to see what those subsequent payments are going to be that will come in over the following months. What has happened is as we've got what we believe is a seventy-five per cent advanced payment this year, where in the past we've had fifty, we've got what is basically a bumper year, so our financial assistance grant for this year is going to be eleven-point-two million, I've budgeted next year for approximately eight-point-two, I believe off the top of my head, which would mean that we would still be expecting a seventy-five per cent advanced payment of the following year's grant. If we get into a situation at any stage where that advanced payment changes from seventy-five per cent, say back down to fifty, we will have a low year to compensate for this high year, so that's a risk that, that exists at the moment, as well as I've accounted for an advanced payment next year that is similar to the advanced payment we received this year, if the allocation comes through and it's not what we're expecting, we might also have an issue there. At the moment, we've done the best with the information that we have.
Okay, thanks Jess, I mean, we need to keep our fiscal antennas up on that, and hopefully we'll get some confirmation because the time's ticking, it's the twenty-eighth of June, surely they would, let us know before the end of the financial year.
Councillors, we've been conservative in with respect to how we've budgeted the grant for next year, so we've taken into account, we did receive the preliminary advice that our grant would decrease by four per cent each and every year over the next three years, so we increased by CPI and then we, the, the total pool, but then we decreased our allocation by four per cent, so that's how we've got to that eight-point-two million that we're looking at in your budget, uh, budget for next year, which is irrationally similar to the figure that we had this year, there at eight-point-three. So I think from looking at how we look at setting our budget, that is in and around that eight-point-three, eight-point-two million is where we, our annual allocation sits, so that signals to the community what our allocation is from the Grants Commission, so we'll, we'll just have to wait and see what the actual allocations come out in terms of prepayments that do skew things one way or the other, but, and we'll just have to also wait and see which way the actual revised methodology comes down, but at this stage, we are looking at that and planning for that proposed reduction.
And that's if this, the state grant commission recommendations are adopted, so for anyone watching online, it gets confusing, the federal government increase, the financial assistance grants to all of the, the, every council in the country, but it's allocated to the states and then the states have different methodologies, that's what happens when you mess with the methodology without increasing the pie, you should not fight amongst yourselves.
Yeah, I totally agree, I totally agree, Matt, but anyway, we'll leave it at that because we shouldn't be confused by this, because as I've, as I've said previously and on public record, is that one per cent was never going to be enough from the financial assistance grants, but that's a debate for another day, for next year perhaps.
Oh, one per cent's a lot, councillor Churchill, we'll be very, very happy, at the moment it's sitting around point-zero-five-five per cent, would almost double.
I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get into an argument with you, Mayor Matt, based on the fact that they, they froze it for three years, let's, let's put that in perspective, they froze it for three years, where are they going to make up on, on that inequity that was created over that three-year period, but that's a debate for another day.
Well, true, if they unfroze and then went to one per cent, we might agree, okay, councillor, good luck, question?
Just to put it into context, I think the, the half per cent of financial assistance grants that we get, if it was to be one per cent, that's worth about six million dollars to ratepayers in the Gladstone region, that's six million dollars ratepayers have to fund, and with the change in methodology that would possibly or possibly not be adopted by the Queensland Government, that's worth over a million dollars over the next three years, again, which ratepayers will have to foot the bill, over, I think it's about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand per year, so local government, and I know I'm preaching to the converted, looks after thirty-three per cent of the nation's infrastructure, and we do it with only four per cent of the total public sector tax receipts, so we need federal governments and state governments to work with local governments so that we can address those critical infrastructure needs in our community.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Trevor?
Uh, thanks Mayor, the big problem, of course, with that argument is that both the state and federal government have no money, and won't have any money for a very long period of time, through no fault of their own, and, but because of a, a virus that caused a pandemic, and it was necessary to flush the economy with funds, just as it was in two thousand and nine when the global financial crisis hit, and we've been on a slow, slow recovery ever since then, and have now suffered further heartache because of circumstances beyond all of our control, I might add, including local governments throughout Australia. But despite the pessimism and despite the bad news and despite, despite the additional onus and responsibility forced upon our ratepayers because of that lack of ability to provide additional funding to us, I did notice in the report some good news, and largely attributable to your lobbying all those years ago, Mayor, and that was Gladstone Area Water Board and the Queensland Government is providing ratepayers of this region eight-point-six million dollars this year, so that money hasn't been received yet, but that's a welcome injection, and I'd like to publicly thank the Queensland Government and the Gladstone Area Water Board for their ongoing support of Gladstone regional ratepayers, although that pipeline of income is not enshrined in legislation, it continues to flow, just as our wa, the water does through our taps, and I'd like to thank both entities for that, Mayor, and you, of course, for that, that lobbying all those years ago, which, which has represented a continual flow of fiscal resources to our community, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks councillor Trevor, I love seeing that line item in the budget every year, when they told us, when they took the money away from us and told us we'd never give it back, and other people told me to give up on it, it's, it's good, eight-point-six million this year on top of many millions the last few years, and I have it on pretty good authority, regardless of, even though it's not in legislation, regardless of who's in power in George Street, that, that won't change again, but would love to see it actually in legislation, so we'll keep putting of the good fight, but anyway, it's, it's good to see that money in. So we'll keep putting of the good fight, but anyway, it's, it's good to see that money in our budget. Any further questions for Jess? Counselor Hansen, happy to move?
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Seconded, Counselor Branthwaite. No further questions? I put the motion all in favour. Motion's carried and congratulations again Jess, well done.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have one item left on the agenda, which is G one point eight. And it'll be the adoption of the show holiday for twenty twenty three. Move, Counselor Trevor?
Yes, Mayor. It'll be in my valedictory speech at some stage in the future, but, um, in view of the fact that I was unsuccessful in my lobbying to have the show shut down and the area dedicated to a multi-purpose sports facility or a retirement village, I'm happy to move the show holiday for this year.
Thank you. Can I get a?
Next year.
Twenty twenty three.
Perhaps even the year after, who knows?
Counselor Muscat, were you seconding that or did you have a question?
No, I'd like to second that and also support Counselor Trevor on his quest. The battle isn't over.
Thank you. Um, no need to, we don't need to battle today. We're just setting a holiday.
It's a vigorous pitch.
I know.
The conversation is done over.
It is. And that means, of course, the Gladstone region will get a long weekend. And so it's in line with the, I believe, Monday of the Eka, which it has been now for a number of years when we made that decision in the meeting at Baffle Creek. Go down in history, that meeting. Um, any further comments, questions or opposition to the motion? I put the motion all in favour. Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. There's no further business and there's no urgent items and no confidential items. I'll declare the meeting closed at ten twenty seven AM and thank you for your attendance.